Regular city council meeting of April 4th, 2016 to order. We do have four of us, please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pagers, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda, approved the agenda as voiced in accordance with the open meeting law, here on place all agenda items on the table for the discussion with the addition of returning summer help to the golf course. And summer employee at the golf course, everything for new?
For approving the-
Approving the new?
Yep.
Just under consent, or do we need?
Yeah, they can use consent.
So they can I under consent? Anything else we need to add?
Yeah, and then in awards for C certificate appreciation from USDA rule development.
Do we see USDA rule development? What's the wish of the council with the additions?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised agenda.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apologize, same sign. Motion carries approval of the minutes, approval copy of the minutes from the special work session meeting of March 21st, 2016, and the regular meeting, March 21st, 2016. What's the wish to the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Mayor Zilke, second by Councilman Moten. Approving minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apologize, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills. Approved checks 93783 through 93857 totaling $156,297.09. Mr. Gusher?
Page one. Page two. Page three.
Senator Squad, are you ready to go then now?
Page four. Page five. That concludes it. Dr. Greg earlier, and he was saying that golf course is doing pretty well so far this year, ahead of the year. With that, I make motion to approve checks 93783 through 93857 for $156,297.09.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Councilman Bushick, second by Councilman Canofla. Approve the bills, any further discussion?
Yes, I've noticed in several places here we have a series of crossing fees to the railroad. The railroad, you know, trains cross streets in Little Falls, including Highway 27, 58 times a day. Do we receive crossing fees from the railroad?
Not that I've seen yet.
I think this has something to do with way back when the railroad is like that, it's national security, and so they get a few benefits from that.
Our roads are going over there regularly, remember? They were given the land.
And there was some effort on that in Congress recently. And speaking with railroad people, they have turned over the crossing fee amounts to a private agency that has arbitrarily raised those fees to some extremely high rates. And it seems that that's an issue that I guess kind of bothers me.
Mark, we've had discussions at our Morrison County mayor's meetings that John attends, and there is a group getting together along the railroad corridor and trying to get some support federally for this for the same reason. I believe the county gets charged for the same things, or Royallton gets charged for the same things, everybody along the tracks gets charged, so.
And there seems to be no recourse and no appeal as to the amount.
We've tried.
Well, and then the fact that, my understanding is, I don't think they've sent us a check for assessments for that northwest.
But they're not required to pay.
So they're not required to pay that either.
If I goes further, when we crossed the Mississippi River with a cable or something, we're paying crossing fees there too, and that goes to, or does it to DNR, or?
That's a one-time thing, no, that's not an annual fee.
Okay. But we get assessed fees for a lot of things.
If it wasn't so ridiculous, it wouldn't be so funny. I mean, we're all up here laughing.
Because you can't.
Should do like they do with their assessment just right before they heard on him mailed back.
So you got a motion and a second to approve the bills? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apologize, same sign. Motion carries awards, donation, presentation, proclamations. Presentation, 2016 annual training schedule, economic impact and environmental briefing. Colonel St. Silver?
Good evening, city council members, council president, and Mr. Mayor, while coming in every year and updating on what's going on at Camp Ripley, interestingly enough, I'm going to talk a little bit about trains.
So we're subject.
Yeah, I understand that. Next slide, please. Mission hasn't changed, I'll go over a number of units that are getting ready to deploy right now, so we'll be training them, and we are currently training at camp. Remember always at Camp Ripley, it's three missions for us. Our federal mission is obviously my primary mission, and that's to ensure that the soldier and airman of the Minnesota Guard and associated units receive the training they need to do our federal missions. The secondary mission of mine is a state mission, and that's protecting the property and citizenry of the state of Minnesota. That's called the governor. And that's why you've seen so much state infrastructure involvement at Camp Ripley. And then the third is obviously the community relations. And as I talked to a few, you just prior to the meeting, obviously you heard us at Camp Ripley this weekend as we start our spring season, and we created a little bit of that clear sky thunder this weekend as the artillery heads back to the field and our heavy units started back with their training cycle. Next slide, please. Our economic impact is sitting pretty well. Couple numbers that I'll point out to you that are pretty important to me, and I use as kind of an indicator of how we're doing. Really tends around local contracts important to me. I'd like this number to be about 3 million. It's the only number right now that's just lagging a little bit. I think it'll be up over 3 million this year. And that's actually local contracts we're doing in the community areas with business. That's businesses bringing, supplying us at Camp Ripley. And that's a number that I like to watch and like to keep that around that $3 million mark. Another one that's important, obviously, is food. A lot of food is locally contracted, a lot of food comes in and off, and believe it or not, our soldiers eat a lot of food. I know if you, I probably briefed you before, but a couple years ago, we had the largest single day of sales in Domino's Pizza in the United States. So it suggests we also eat a lot of pizza, appears, so. And it comes from all over, but again, all those are indicators how we're doing. This one right here, I'll talk about later, Army compatible use, but you're all aware of ACO. Did very, very well, and in a resource constrained federal environment, we still were able to garner almost $3 million of federal money and another billion dollars of state money to execute those conservation easements that we're working on around the installation. So very, very successful year, and we've already received a million and a half this year. So in our accounts, all ready to execute those conservation easements with willing landlords. So feel very good about our economic impact this year. Next slide. May is going to be a pretty, you'll see this around Camp Ripley, it's not going to be like last summer. We were very, very busy last summer, and I think you all saw that in the community area, but this year it'll be more of a flat curve throughout the entire year. But what I'd like to talk about quickly is May. You'll see that military numbers up around 9,000, and that's because we have a couple of large operations going on. Our first brigade combat team, which is almost 5,000 soldiers, will be deploying for their deployment readiness exercise to Fort Irwin, California, to the National Training Center. So we'll be doing one of the largest rail movements that we've done in many, many years, and that will occur between 14 and 23 May. And then again, when that equipment returns, 7 to 17 July. That will be 47 to 50 rail cars a day for that time period, per day. One train consisting of 47 to 49 rail cars will depart Camp Ripley not later than 6:00 PM daily from 14 to 23 May. The empty cars will be staged then at Camp Ripley, so we'll bring the train in and train out every evening by no later than 9:00 PM. So as we pull a full train out, and that's all of our tanks, all of our heavy Bradley fighting vehicles, that's all of our heavy equipment that's supporting that unit. Now those rail cars will move in and out, and then they'll be staged up at Staples, so you'll be seeing along the Highway 10 corridor as they move in and off the installation. Now that will directly affect the traffic on the Highway 115 bridge, and that bridge will be closed each day from about 6:00 to 9:00. And we have that all coordinated, and we'll keep it open when the train's not actually sitting on the bridge, but you all are aware on the 115 bridge, that's a one-way bridge in and off the installation, and then our east gate onto the installation will be closed that entire time period. And then again, the reverse will happen in July when all of that equipment comes back to Camp Ripley. So our east gate will be closed, it's going to be, it's quite an exercise for us logistically, moving all that equipment in and out, but it's a very important exercise for us in moving that large heavy equipment with the current environment we're in. So before I move on, I want to ask, anybody have any questions on that? And if you do, please, please let me know, or get ahold of us, and we'll work our best. We're coordinating with the State Patrol, with Morrison County, so I think we have everything where we need it to be, and it'll be quite an interesting exercise to watch as we move those units on and off. These are the units that will be training, very small. Again, civilian numbers obviously go down in the summertime. Next slide, please. June will be a fairly busy month for us, a lot of small units, but I'll point out the 43rd Norwegian exchange will be 16 to 30 June this year, so I'll be receiving 115 Norwegians at Camp Ripley for two weeks. We'll be doing inter-agency training with our law enforcement agencies. So I know Morrison County, and Little Falls, and St. Paul, and Henford County SWAT will all be participating along with our integrating. For the first time ever, we're going to integrate our Minnesota National Guard soldiers, and the Norwegian soldiers, and the civilian law enforcement together to do some operations together. And it's been very advantageous for us, and created quite a training event. So training in the, every third or fourth year in the summer creates a new capability for us. And then we will turn around six months from now and do another exchange in February of 17th. So it'll be a very quick turnaround with our Norwegian exchange over the next cycle. You see some units out of bulk state, they'll be coming in, there's some more artillery. These engineers will be bridging the Mississippi again during this time period in June, so as you're moving up and down, we obviously stay in very close contact with the Corps of Engineers and up and down the railroad corridor. Next slide. July, very easy month for us, but this unit right here, I'd highlight, 20135 Infantry Battalion out of Mankato, they are in a deployment cycle right now. They are deploying to the Sinai, and they'll be leaving in late July, so they'll be finishing up their deployment readiness exercises at Camp Ripley prior to their departure in July. So as you can see, we're still in the rotation overseas and back with the current situations around the world. Another artillery unit comes in, they were the ones that were shooting last weekend, and then just, and this maintenance company's actually come in to support all that equipment coming back, along with the 400-plus mechanics we have at Camp Ripley. So all of that equipment, when it comes back from Fort Irwin, will probably be pretty broke, pretty used, so they'll get that all back in our stocks. Next slide. August is, again, we're with it out of, we have the Marines coming in in August. They normally come that time of year, some aviation elements, Army Reserve companies will be in, and then some more air defense artillery out of South Dakota. Very light, not a lot of noise activity here, so this should be a fairly light month for us noise-wise. Next slide. September, we get into our fall cycle, and we're back into our civilian agency training. We have normally fall training, obviously the Morrison County Water Festival School's back, we get a lot of school traffic that time of year. State patrols run through their certifications and DNR, and then our snowfall training. MINDOT is becoming more and more prevalent on the installation, I think a lot of people are noticing that. A lot of their regional meetings are being held now at Camp Ripley, and I believe MINDOT will be a larger function on Camp Ripley as the years progress. Next slide. October, we get into my favorite time of year, obviously that's when we do all of our disabled veteran hunts, and we do our outdoor activities with those. Have the Minnesota Fire Marshals come in for their fall training, and then a very special event for us, obviously, is our Court of Honor that we have every fall honoring our soldiers' great service to the Minnesota Guard. Next slide. Couple of the new facilities we have onboard that we're currently working with, the Medical Simulation Training Center, if you've not seen this, I would encourage you to come out and see the Medical Simulation Training Center. This thing was built for the specific purpose of the 10 minutes of life saving that happens in a catastrophic accident or incident. Okay, so for our soldiers, as I tell people all the time, our medics have to be trained for a catastrophic incident, always. And this facility does that. Now, something that's really exciting about this facility is that we weren't sure we'd be able to offer the training capabilities that it had, which means the live breathing mannequins, the amputee, the kinds of trauma that EMTs need to have, and that law enforcement people need to have, but we are able to offer that to local levels of law enforcement and EMTs, and we'll be working with that. We had to get that cleared, and we did. So I'm very excited to know that we can use this also for our state and local partners for their training as well. And it's an amazing facility, it's absolutely amazing. It's immersion training, it actually immerses you into the situation. And these mannequins are very, very lifelike, very lifelike. So if you get a chance, I encourage you to come out and see how that facility works. Next slide. Our education center, by now most of you have been out there, it's working beautifully, it's absolutely working beautifully. We have a lot of classes going through there, both civilian and military. The dining facility is doing fantastic. Everything that we expected from this facility is coming to fruition, and it's opened up a lot of additional training opportunities for us out at Camp Ripley, so we're very, very proud of this facility and what it can do, and what it's brought to Camp Ripley's capabilities. Next slide. Our partners are always busy at Camp Ripley, the DNR, they're currently finishing up a cycle of conservation officers with graduation, as well as doing their spring in-service. The State Patrol graduates here, their academy graduates, and they will start their spring in-service here very shortly. HSEM, Homeland Security Emergency Management, has quite a spring coming up with exercises, and a couple of large exercises scheduled for this fall, emergency-related. And then MINDOT with their annual training events. And you've probably been aware, both here and at the facility that I manage in the Northern Metro in Arden Hills, we've been doing a lot of active shooter exercises with law enforcement agencies, and obviously, I think you're all aware that we're going through some force protection changes at Camp Ripley, which includes arming our security force. So we are currently in the process of that training and certification, and we will be arming our security force, which we have not done in the past due to the circumstances that occurred in Tennessee last year, and the higher active role around military installation and toward the military people. So that will be occurring as well, and is ongoing right now. Next slide. Our environmental programs are very strong, our cultural natural resource programs are doing very, very well. I will highlight, obviously, the green energy things. We have road ground and solar field, that is ongoing, they're outbuilding that. All of the new poles are put in already in the substations. We are working right now on our solar thermal, geothermal's doing very well. We brought two very large facilities on geothermal, both horizontal fields. Those are our first horizontal fields that we've had. We've always had verticals, but we haven't had a horizontals, and they're producing very well. We're currently working on a microgrid distribution system, working towards that, and obviously, our requirements of a 20% energy reduction by 2020 is what our overall goal is for the installation. And my partner in the construction facilities management office is well ahead of that curve under General Nash's guidance to ensure that we do that. Next slide. Our environmental partnerships are very strong and continue to be strong. We have probably the largest group of interns, college interns, that we've had in many years, because we have the opportunity with a little more flat curve on our training cycle to get more interns out there, working on the environment and doing some science work out there. So the Department of Natural Resources, and Board of Water and Soil, Minnesota State College and Universities, I have a lot of summer interns coming from CLC, from their Wildlife Department, from St. Cloud State, from the University of Minnesota, and I have some folks coming in from the University of Michigan to work on the northern long-eared bat. As you're aware, that's another little critter out there that we're working on right now, and working with the US Fish and Wildlife Services as we determine what its effect is on the environment. So the nature conservancy, local school districts, all still very much involved out at Camp Ripley. Next slide. These are some of the surveys ongoing, I can tell you that our Golden Eagle Ripley, she has left the installation now, she's up in northern Canada, headed back up to her summer nesting grounds. She did come back last winter, so she has been documented as one of the northernmost golden eagles in the United States. And so she's become a very popular young lady for our natural resource environmentalists, as they watch her, and she is collared, and so she has a radio transmitter on her, and we keep track of her, and it's ongoing signs at Camp Ripley. Our black bears are coming back very nicely, we have been down for many years, and this year's poll of two-year cubs showed that the population is becoming much more stable again, so again, it's a reclamation that cycle, and we've seen our deer population start to recover as well from the last couple winters, and of course, this winter helped everybody, I think, in when it comes to the outdoor fauna. There's that little bat, a lot of work being done on the northern long-eared bat. Obviously, for me, the effect on the installation is that all my logging has to be done here before the deer shows up for spring. And so we'll be done with our logging operations, and it has been a little bit, a little tricky, but I will tell you that the science that they're learning and working in concert with the Fish and Wildlife Service has been very advantageous for us, and as we share that science with the state and the federal government. Next slide. Our community outreach remains very, very strong. Our winter programs kind of suffered a little bit. We did get the National Guard biathlon championships in this winter. We had to haul snow for two weeks to make that happen, but we got it done, so. But everything else in the winter was kind of a little nice. But we are, our spring turkey hunts are coming up, so the disabled veterans hunts are coming up in early May, and then of course, our full summer. We have Earth Day event, we'll be helping the City of Little Falls School District with their Community Day, and then the next day we'll be doing an Earth Day event at Camp Ripley for our employees. Next slide. Prescribed burning, I can tell you that we're almost done. This has been a fantastic year for us, and we're almost done. We have finished all of our burning in the south part of the training area. We burned lead chip back area today, and all we have left is to clean up a little bit up here in the northwest corner, and we will be done with our prescribed burning program for the season up here at Camp Ripley. So it's been very successful, the conditions have been fantastic. So we've taken advantage of those conditions and got all that done, so we shouldn't have to worry about a lot of fire problems and/or issues either, even if we have a dry summer this year. Next slide. There's our ACO, and as you can see, a lot of that is turning darker red as you see fit there. We're currently working on four land acquisitions with the DNR, and 18 pending conservation easements that are fully funded, and those are being executed as we speak. As I indicated, we received another 1.5 million the other day from the federal government, and we'll be executing that. We have 210 landowners continuing to be interested. And this year, you may have heard, we were designated during the last legislative session as a state, as a Sentinel landscape. Now what that means is, it opens us up to the federal Sentinel Landscape Program, which opens up money from the Department of the Interior, Department of Agriculture, Bureau of Land Management, to reclaim land. And it allows us to facilitate that discussion in with our partners to be able, again, open up another, for lack of a better word, pot of money for us to help execute those conservation easements. So we're very excited about that. We have not been designated as a federal site yet, but we're confident that we will in the next year, which would be the first National Guard site in the inventory that was designated. We're competing against the largest military installations in their federal defense for these kinds of buffering opportunities, but it's been very successful, and it's critical for the future at Camp Ripley. Next slide. That's it. And I appreciate your opportunity, I appreciate your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do you have any questions, Ferrin?
Well, it's good you got the burns done before the birds come.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're very fortunate, I'm very pleased we got leached on today, because that one, you know, up in the northern end, is so wind-dependent, and the grass is very, very long this year. I mean, we went into fall wet, and we had a pretty head of cover.
Mr. President, I don't have any questions, but I have a couple comments. First of all, Colonel, thank you for the great job that you're doing out there, and that the Guard is doing out there. Very receptive to the community, and I will state that I am on the Camp Ripley Citizens Advisory Committee, and I think we get an inside look at a lot of things. And also, thank you for the economic impact that that has on our community. It's huge, not only what you see up there, but we see a lot of soldiers from different states in town at different locations shopping and purchasing things, we greatly appreciate that. I've been fortunate to get in the education center, which is an awesome building. That's quite the work of our men. Lastly, the amount of construction that goes on out there, and your use of local contractors whenever you can is pretty incredible. I know some of the companies that have spent a lot of time up there and greatly appreciate the fact that they have a lot of work and good work to be done, so thank you for all that.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Proclamation? Mayor for national service? Mayor?
Okay, I have a proclamation read for Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors and city councils are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being, and whereas from September 2015 through January 2016, 10 volunteers from our community have served 2,334.04 hours assisting children in the Little Falls School District, working one-on-one with students needing extra help in reading, spelling, and math skills. Those volunteers are Rita Britz Tennis, Ellen Funk, Linda Galston, Sister Granita Lindstrom, Judy Plasic, Annie Sharon, John Blom, Edna Gallus, Lois Meyer, and Anita Michaels, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with. And whereas, national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions, leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact, and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas, national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and Mayors Across Country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 5th, 2016. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Gregory J. Zelka, Mayor of Little Falls, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2016 as National Service of Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities, dated this fourth day of April 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, awards, USDA.
Certificate of Appreciation in recognition of our Little Falls fiber in partnering with the community development of Morrison County USDA Rural Development in support of rural small business expansion and job creation. This was delivered to us at the Sprout Open House on Friday. Carol Anderson from the Morrison County CDC brought a guide for us too. So it was handed out from USDA. They had a number of representatives there for that event. It was really cool to see and really an honor for us to receive this for our work. And just getting that fiber ready to go, so, pass this around.
Do we need an action to receive that one?
Okay, on to the consent agenda. Airport Commission Minutes, February 2016, received. Dam Festival Medallion Hunt, Mid-Minnesota Federal Credit Union, approved. Energy and Environmental Committee Minutes, March 2016, received. Firework and Tree Board Minutes, March 2016, received. Morrison County Prosecution Report, February 2016, received. Planning Commission Minutes, January and February 2016, received. Our Lady of Lourdes Church, applicable for exemptment and temporary on sale. Malt Beverage Annual Bazaar, July 30, 2016, received. Approve hiring, returning summer employees from the golf course. Approve, and then also approve hire of new seasonal employees at the golf course. Quick switch to the council on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Hanson. Approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public carings and lettings, manhole rehabilitation, HydroClean LLC.
Craig?
Yeah, we received quotes for manhole rehabilitation for the project on the west side of Little Falls. I'll be honest, first we started looking at the areas where we're going to be doing the preventative maintenance in terms of the payment. Once we started looking at the manholes for the infrastructure under the ground, the manholes showed some signs of deterioration. So we got a price to rehab those and basically do a slip line inside of the existing manhole to minimize how much disruption there would be for the payment above that. The low price came from HydroClean LLC out of Rogers, Minnesota in the amount of $63,850. So tonight, we're asking the council to approve the contract with HydroClean to rehabilitate those 13 manholes.
What's the wish of the council? So moved. Got a motion by Councilman Goyd, second by Councilman Dushik. For approval, discussion?
Yes, will they be replaced with brick or with pre-stressed concrete?
They will, it'll be cast-in-place concrete. What they'll do is, there's typically a cone section on top of the manhole. They'll remove that, and then they'll have another form inside. So they'll use the brick as an outside form, they'll have an inside one so that you have between three and four inches of cast-in-place concrete that they'll, that's in their new, all the way to the road surface.
That was part of our preventative maintenance, what was planned for this year, correct?
It's in the area of the preventative maintenance. They actually come out of two separate pots of money. The preventative maintenance will come out of PIR fund, which is circulate for the roads. And then the manhole rehab is part of the sanitary sewer, that'll come out of the sewer improvement fund. So those are two separate pots that they come on.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries pavement rehabilitation, LA Blacktop Company, homework, Craig?
We went out for bids on the pavement maintenance for our blacktop area on the west side of town. This is for the fog sealing component of it, so there's actually two different treatment types that we have on the blacktop. Well, we're going to have one that's fog sealed, and that's what this price is for here. There's another one that's a slurry seal, that'll be coming up next month at your second meeting. We'll have that one. So tonight, we're recommending the project be awarded to Allied Blacktop Company in the amount of $98,175.10. That'll do the fog seal on the blacktop, puts a little bit more oil on top to try to preserve the pavement a little bit longer.
What's the wish of the council?
Don't make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Lowdrand for the approval of the pavement rehabilitation, discussion? What do we set aside this year, Craig?
It was just under $300,000 is what we set aside for that gap. So this will be the least expensive component of it, slurry seal will be more. But knowing where the bids came in with this project, we'll be under that budget.
I was just wondering if we're jumping the gun by approving this one?
The other one will be more expensive, but this is well worth it.
They all say. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries water tower tank washing and paint touch-up. Elevation coatings LLC, Craig?
Again, we went out for bids for water tower cleaning on the west side particularly. Back in 2012, we had an analysis completed on both of our water towers, east and the west side. And one of the main areas that they had for recommendations, that S.H. had for recommendations for that, those towers, is to have the west tower cleaned because there's a lot of millu starting to grow on the bottom exterior of the tower. And when that starts to occur, it starts to break down a little bit of the coating on that paint. And so we want to get that off of there so that it lasts as long as it has and then try to get a little bit more time on it as well. And then also do some touch-up paint where it's starting to start a little bit of, or delaminate or flake a little bit off, just so we can try to get a couple more years out of that coating on the tower now. We will end up having to do a full reconditioning of that tower probably in about five years. But this will get us, you know, that next five years in order to get to that point. So tonight, we're asking approval to elevation coatings LLC out of St. Cloud in the amount of $24,750.
Quick switch to the council.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Dushik, second by Councilman Canacqua for the approval, questions?
What does it cost to do the whole thing?
Probably about $200,000 to recondition that entire tank.
Thank you.
When you look at it, you see there's something happening.
Yes.
Well, you can, if it's the idea of pay $100 and redo it, or pay $25 to patch it for a few years. We're talking a couple hundred grand to blast the paint.
Right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries spring leaf and brush collection, Bob Lemire Roll Off, Refuge and Recycling, homework, Lauren?
Yes, staff requested quotes from the hollers, the local hollers, to do our spring leaf and brush collection. We received one quote back from Bob Lemire Roll Off's Refuge and Recycling at $2,890. Last spring, I believe, the leaf and brush collection was awarded at $25,750. And last fall, it was at $38,300. So we are requesting that the bid be awarded, the low quote be awarded to Bob Lemire Roll Off's Refuge and Recycling for our spring leaf and brush collection to be charged with a score grant, held on May 7th, rain or shine, and they will be leaving the bags.
Quick switch to the council.
I so moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Lowdrand, second by Mayor Zelka for approval. Any further discussion?
You need to know how many leaves and how much brush they really pick up?
No, I don't. I know there are a lot of leaves sitting around.
So they didn't tie this in with the day of hearing?
You know, we talked about that, we thought about it and tried to do it. When we've talked to the hollers about it, it's difficult because the day of carrying is done in the afternoon, they have their regular garbage routes. So when they do day of carrying, that's in the afternoon after they start with their garbage routes. So for them, having, what we've been told for them is having staff enough to do the pickup and get everything cleaned up can be somewhat difficult.
And we are working on getting pricing for that as well. I expect that at your next, next health payment for the day of carrying.
I thought day of carrying was always donated, plenty of it?
The first couple of years, I'd say three or four years it was, the last one or two has not.
The date for the day of carrying will be before this?
Nope, it's on May 4th. It's always the first Wednesday of the month.
Can it just sit there for three days?
A lot of times, the prop builders don't necessarily like to have the bags out in front of there. That's the story, that's what we've been told.
I notice on the Lemire bid sheet, they have May 7th circled, rain or shine. Does that mean that Saturday, May 14th is no longer considered?
Correct, we usually give them two dates, two options, when it works best for the hollers. And the holler requested May 7th, which is typically when we do it.
That our community should be aware that it's a one-day thing, only on May 7th.
Right, and we sent out a flyer in the utility bill, or put a note on the utility bill that, you know, when the leaf pickup is, and we also advertise it in the record.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries Morrison Soil and, on the new business, Morrison County Soil and Water Conservation District funding, rain gardens.
After our last council meeting, I spoke with Helen McLennan from the Morrison County Soil and Water Conservation District. And she had mentioned that they do have some additional grant funds that they were awarded to go towards stormwater improvement. So we have, if we want, about $11,000 of remaining grant funds that the city could tap into to do some stormwater improvements, in particular, rain gardens. There is a 25% match that we would have to match, but we can do that with in-kind forces. So whether it's staff time or anything else like that, we'd be able to meet that 25% match. So tonight, we're asking for approval to go ahead and work with the Soil and Water Conservation District to use those $11,000 that they have in grant funds.
What's the wish of the council?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Alderman Hurcock for approval. Any further discussion?
Yes, I've been asked to define a rain garden.
A rain garden is essentially a shallow depression that collects stormwater, particularly from the pervert or the soil of the road. It drains away, it's designed to drain away in between 24 and 40 hours. It's planted with flowers that are designed or intended to have water, you know, up their stalks so that they won't die. Some of them don't like to have their roots wet, these plants do. And that's essentially what a rain garden is.
You have a picture of it in your little magic gray box.
Not in my gray box right now, I can get you one though.
There was a special on TV about these, it's the best way to filter hazard, I mean, chemicals and that, it works as a nice filter system. You go clean the water before it goes into the ground. It's pretty interesting.
So got a motion and a second for approval, any other discussion?
You need to know where you want to put one?
I do. On Third Street, we are looking at, on Third Street and Sixth Avenue, we've talked to the prop builder over there, they are receptive. And then possibly another location down on Third Street, I'm not sure yet. But we do have, I think, three other sites around town that we might be able to use it as well.
Could that be something that I didn't know, there was a Tony Parker one?
Actually, I don't know.
And Craig, I believe there had been some sort of discussion on wanting us to put rain gardens elsewhere. And you met with some people from Morrison County Soil and Water and told them that you thought we had better locations. Is that part of where this came out of?
It is. There was a study that was done for Little Falls with the help of Mississippi Headwaters Board and to kind of identify some areas where we could potentially do some stormwater improvements. Just knowing the local topography and soils that we have, we worked with their consultant to update it or revise it because some of the areas, they had high water tables. And even though a rain garden has to have three feet of separation between where the depression is at and where the water table is at, we know that's not going to necessarily be conducive to some of the locations that were selected. So we had it revised and updated to reflect that, so we're not putting a rain garden in and causing more issues with prop builders.
Well, and I think that with us continuing to work with Morrison County Soil and Water and the Mississippi Headwaters, there's a lot of grant opportunities that could help us in the future, so it behooves us to continue to work with them. So Ellen McLennan had said that you've done a great job so far communicating with them, so thank you for that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries Resolution 2016-22, declare surplus property and authorize sale thereof, Humper, fire truck?
Resolution 2016-22, we're going to declare the 1988 Ford Humper Truck as surplus and then also authorize the sale of the vehicle to the Flenzburg Fire Department for the sum of $13,400. With the purchase of the new Humper Truck by the fire department in the city last year, that truck is now in service, and this is a surplus vehicle that they aren't using now. So we would request that you approve Resolution 2016-22.
What's the wish of the council?
Don't make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Dushik, second by Alderman Hurcock to approve Resolution 2016-22. Further discussion?
Were other communities interested in this?
Data.
Go ahead.
The fire chief had discussed with other communities or other intergovernmental agencies about use of the truck, or trying to find another place for it since it wasn't a surplus to us. And Flenzburg was the one that came back with the interest in it and a good offer in the beginning.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll please?
William?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Little Grant?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dushik?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-23, authorize supplemental environmental assessment grant application to Minnesota Forest Control Agency, rain gardens.
This is a grant request through the MPCA to get some additional funding for our 2017 projects. So we'd be looking at projects next year that we would be looking at construction. So we'd be looking at projects next year that we would be looking at construction to put in some potential rain garden locations. There, again, there is 25% match that we would be able to, to match with in-kind or funds from our, our stormwater, stormwater. But the maximum grant amount is $30,000 and be requesting the full amount and then the 25% or $10,000 will come out of the cities, either in-kind or stormwater improvement fund. So tonight we're asking for approval from the council to go forward with Resolution 2016-23 to submit that application and then if we're awarded that, to execute the documents to receive those funds.
What's the wish of the council on Resolution 2016-23?
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilman Canapla for approval. Discussion? So the local match, that's our in-kind services again, or that's got to be cash out of pocket?
It can be both or, or either one. I see it being, being both. I don't think we're going to be able to come up with $10,000 with just in-kind forces. So I see us tapping into some of our, our stormwater improvement fund, but I don't, I don't have an exact dollar mark of how much that's going to be.
So that's where it comes from, the stormwater?
Yes.
Yep. Other discussion? Hearing none, Resolution, caller roll.
Hercock?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Zelka?
Yes.
Canapla?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Carries.
Use the voting booths, staff, independent school district 42, special election, consider. John?
Yeah, the school district asked us if we could loan them our voting booths for the upcoming referendum vote, so I feel that it's a, we're not using them. They have in the past. I think it's a good utilization to allow them to use the voting booths for the referendum voting day.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Alderman Hercock to approve the school district's request. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, big honor reports.
Mr. President, I would just like to say that I couldn't help but notice 59 trees park along, you know, like ballparks recently. Along, I'm decided, Lemire property, they are, I'll call them probably...
All some of them are six feet.
Five, six.
Oh, five.
So it'll be a little bit up and down. Someone's got to go in the ground after I'm gone.
We're going to be able to put more back in.
Yeah.
They're going to look good.
I don't know, I guess, as great as I can. I did, Rusty Gloss is the one that called me and told me.
There were six volunteers, I was over there talking to them, about six volunteers.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, there's six.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we will adjourn.